Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The Sergeant-at-Arms or Designee has the front lobby been attended to and are the doors now open for public access? Thank you. At this time, we request all electronic devices to be turned off or to be put in silent mode. We also ask that you please refrain from using flash photography, except during the special presentations of the meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the November 22nd, 2022, School Board Meeting. The time is currently 6:00 PM, and the meeting is now called to order. Pursuant to Florida Statute 1001.371, the Superintendent acts as Chairman until the organization of the Board has been completed. We would like to take this opportunity to remind members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or highest potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. As is the custom of the Board, Ms. Giovinelli will lead us in prayer, and after which Ms. Patrico will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Lord, thank you that you promised that where two or three are gathered, you are there in the midst. Lord, we welcome you amongst us today and celebrate the gift of life that you have lavished upon each of us. We ask that you would open our ears so that we may hear your voice. Daily, we live our lives side by side, sharing in our community. We take each other for granted, living our busy lives, going through our days, seldom thinking of the community, seldom stopping to think of the needs of our neighbors. Community is there, and we take it for granted until disaster strikes, hardship comes, or weather rages, then we suddenly and desperately need our community. We need it to help us survive, keep hope alive, to live. It is our community that provides the essential safety net, protecting each of us in the face of loss and tragedy. It is our community that brings out the neighbor in all of us. Let us promise that today, we fight to protect the rights of all. May your goodness and love be present amongst us today. Come bless our gathering with unity, hope, and vision. As we welcome our new Board members, Lord, I pray that we are, I pray for unity and unite us to make the best decisions for our students and community. Build us in the deepest respect for one another, so that our community may be one. Please bless the Superintendent and his employees. Lord, we pray for hope and peace. Come stir your hope within our hearts and renew our faith. Lord, I pray for vision and guidance. Pray for your vision. Fill our lives as we seek to reveal love. May every action be done in love, for this is my prayer for our community that we, that we serve in love. We ask all this in precious glorious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
As stated earlier, according to Florida statutes, it is my responsibility to act as Chairman until the organization of the Board takes place. Before continuing with the meeting, as is tradition, we would present, we like to present a plaque to our outgoing Chairman, in this case, Ms. Debbie Jordan, in appreciation for your service of the last year.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open and close the nominations for Chairman and Vice Chairman. Each will be followed by a vote. Board Member Giovinelli?
Yes. I have had, received several emails for public asking for public comment prior to the, actually, reorganization. And so I would like to make a motion, and I would like to know if I have a second, I would like to move to make an exception to the Board Policy 1.11 in order to allow public comment prior to the reorganization of the Board in compliance with Board Policy 1.10.
Thank you, Board Member Giovinelli. Is there a second? There is no second, so the motion dies.
Thank you.
At this time, I will open and close the nominations for Chairman and Vice Chairman. Each will be followed by a vote. I will then make a recommendation for the establishment of the dates and times for the Board's schedule of the regular school Board meetings. Attorney Dupuy Bruno, please explain the nomination and voting process.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. In the nomination and voting process, the Board would follow laws mandating open governance. In addition, school Board policy provides that the Board follow Robert's Rules of Order. Thus, the nomination and voting process is as follows. The Superintendent will call for nominations for the position of Chairman of the Board. Please raise your hand, and please raise them high, and wait until you are recognized by the Superintendent. Verbal nominations without recognition will not be recognized. Once all of the nominations have been received, he will close the nomination, and the Board's Secretary will take a roll-call vote. The vote will be taken in the order that the nominations were received. Each member will signify their vote by stating aye or nay; yes or no is also acceptable. We will continue this process until a nominee receives a majority vote of the Board. Nominations do not require a second. Once the Chairman has been elected, we will move forward with the same process for the Vice Chair position.
At this time, we'll move back to our agenda related to the Chair and Vice Chair. Please raise your hand and wait until I call upon you before providing your nomination. I'm turning to pay attention. I will now accept nominations for Chairman of the Board for the coming year. Ms. Giovinelli?
I would like to nominate myself.
Mr. Fisher?
I hereby nominate Mr. Persons for Chair.
I was gonna say Madam Chair. I'm so used to saying that. Board Member Jordan?
Thank you. I would like to nominate Ms. Kathleen Morgan.
Ms. Giovinelli?
I would like to withdraw my nomination.
Ms. Fleming?
I would also like to nominate Board Member Persons.
Are there any other nominations? Before closing nominations, I'd like to ask the two candidates who nominated if they desire to serve as Chair of the Board. Mr. Persons?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
At this time, we will call for, the nominations are now closed. At this time, Ms. Thomas, would you please take the roll-call vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Patrica, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
Ms. Jordan, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Ms. Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
Dr. Bernier, there is a majority. Mr. Persons has been elected as the Chairman of the Board.
Thank you, Attorney Bruno. I will now accept nominations for Vice Chair of the Board for the coming year. Please raise your hands. Ms. Patrica?
I'd like to nominate Kathleen Morgan.
Mr. Persons?
I'd like to nominate Sam Fisher.
Board Member Jordan?
I'd like to nominate Kathleen Morgan.
Any other nominations? Ms. Fleming?
I too would like to nominate Sam Fisher.
At this time, I see no other nominations. This time, I'd like the two candidates, Ms. Morgan and Mr. Fisher, to weigh in as to their ability and desire to serve. Ms. Morgan?
I would be happy to serve.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes, I would so be honored to serve.
So therefore, the nominations are now closed. Ms. Thomas, please take the roll-call vote.
Chris Patrica?
No.
No.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Put in?
Yes, please.
Persons?
No.
Ms. Fleming?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Dr. Bernier, the nomination fails. We go to the next nominee, who is Mr. Sam Fisher.
Nominee, Mr. Fisher, nominated by Mr. Persons. Mr. Fisher, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Giovinelli, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica, how do you vote?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan, how do you vote?
No, thank you.
Mr. Persons, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Fleming, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan, how do you vote?
No.
Dr. Bernier, we do have a Vice Chair. Mr. Samuel Fisher has been elected as the Vice Chair of the Board.
So at this time, congratulations are in order for Armor Persons and Sam Fisher. Armor Persons has been elected School Board Chair, Sam Fisher Vice Chair. Board Secretary, please attach the tally sheet of the nominations to the minutes, and thank you. Ms. Jordan is the outgoing Chairman. Would you like to say anything before I turn over the gavel?
I would just like to say thank you for having the opportunity to serve this Board for the last two years as the Chair, and I would ask that both of you make sure that you look at Protocols, page 81 and 82 of our Protocols, so that you understand the duties of this, the Chair and Vice Chair. And we are here to work with you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. I will now turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Board, Mr. Armor Persons.
All right, the next item in the organization of the Board is to establish dates and times for the schedule of regular school Board meetings for the ensuing year.
Mr. Chair, approval of the calendar establishing the meeting dates and times for the regular school Board meetings for the period of January 23rd through December 20, sorry, let me start over. My recommendation is the approval of the calendar establishing the meeting dates and times for the regular school Board meetings for the period of January 2023 through December 2023, as presented.
Board Members, is there a motion to approve?
Jordan?
I so, I so move to accept the calendar as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Morgan?
Motion by Ms. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Morgan. Or is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll-call vote. Please signify by saying either aye or nay when your name is called. Fisher?
Aye.
Giovinelli?
Aye.
Patrica?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Persons? Aye. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
And Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. The approval of the agenda is next. We have one item under information. And then, public comment. And then we'll be doing consent action items, which include one item under Board Office, five items under Academic Services, six items under Business Services, three items under Human Resources, one of which is good cause. Dr. Bernier, please provide an explanation.
Mr. Chair, due to a procedural error in Human Resources, the appointment of an employee failed to appear on the Board agenda before she commenced employment on November 14th, 2022. The position is required, but, the position is required by the State, the Florida Department of Education, as well as federal and state law. Human Resources has determined the source of the oversight and why it occurred. This along, those individuals, along with me, have taken steps to correct this moving forward.
As Presiding Officer, I find there is good cause to add this item to the agenda. We also have three items under Operations and four items under Other Business. Board Members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Sam Fisher?
Motion to approve.
A second?
I second.
Langford Fleming?
Moved by Sam Fisher and seconded by Langford Fleming. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll-call vote. Please signify by saying aye or nay when your name is called. Fisher?
Aye.
Giovinelli?
Aye.
Patrica?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
And Persons is aye. Motion carries seven zero. Information. Dr. Bernier, Hurricane Ian recovery, community update, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Hurricane Ian community update for November 22nd, 2022 is to provide an update related to the district's recovery efforts following Hurricane Ian. The agenda includes school and community updates, Hector A. Cafaretta campus update, district updates, and the United Way collaboration. In school community updates, we are focused on Fort Myers Beach Elementary. We understand and are getting better handle of the historic building information and the requirements related to the historic structure that's located on Fort Myers Beach. Personal items of some of the teachers have been collected and distributed, and additional requests have been made, and we will do our best to recover those teacher items. There is an upcoming Board Workshop on December 13th, where staff will present options moving forward related as it relates to the pathway forward for Fort Myers Beach Elementary. A decision related to Fort Myers Beach pathway forward is expected in a January meeting. The Sanibel School was visited again by staff, school, visited the staff, sorry. The staff visited the school last week. They had their first opportunity to get in and look at the remediation work. Remediation work continues. We are currently reviewing options for connectivity in order to have our safety checklist for reopening, in order to have that completed. We are still having connectivity and summer power issues out on the island. We do expect that Fort Myers, that Sanibel School K-8 could reopen in January of 2023. The Hector A. Cafaretta update. The project for the portable campus remains on schedule and still appears to be, to be completed by December 5th. Thirteen classrooms, four-plex dining, the kitchen, and the freezer are on site. Electrical and plumbing work are underway. The technology infrastructure has begun to be installed. Temporary power and generators are on site, and 12 portables arrived just yesterday. In terms of district updates, regular attendance procedures are back in place effective November 29th. That's the day after we return back to school. In a sense, we'll treat the first day, the 28th, like the first day of school. No students will be absent on that first day. It gives us an opportunity to reset, but students are expected to be back on the 29th, and all of the normal attendance procedures will begin to be enforced. The Calendar Committee has made a recommendation that March 17th be identified as the makeup day due to Hurricane Nicole. This will require Board action and will be brought to you in the December Board meeting. Upcoming presentations I've mentioned, long-term recovery options on December 13th specifically regarding Fort Myers Beach Elementary, the Imperium presentation regarding those of the individuals and organization that helps us interface with FEMA to ensure that we have the best possibility for reimbursement. Additionally, we'll be looking to provide you a long-range planning for the build-outs that are now necessary for those schools that were impacted by the hurricane but remain open. Specifically, I'm talking about things like carpet, tile, ceiling tiles, painting. We know our community wants to know what the long-term plan is for those particular schools as well. I've also been asked to provide an update regarding debris piles. Debris piles located both at the Fort Myers Beach Elementary and the debris pile across from Lexington Middle School do not belong to the school district of Lee County. They are items that are being taken from their particular community locations and stored on county or shared-use property in order to provide an opportunity for those to be taken off the streets to open them up for residents, so that then later on, they can be distributed. A great meeting yesterday with the Mayor. I was thankful of the town, Fort Myers Beach, and their organization. And a couple of reasons for the community that's gathered tonight that we've taken some time is because we wanted to make sure any decision moving forward on the school was made by this school Board, not the outgoing school Board members. And the other piece was to ensure that we would have the opportunity to interact with the new town-elected officials, to be sure that we were including them in the process. Additionally, I'd like the team to know, and the Board to know, and the parents to know, that we have a scheduled meeting on December 13th with the Division of Historical Buildings. They will be coming to town to help us deal and better understand the rules and regulations as it, as it relates to the historical building, not the entire campus, but the specific building that has historical designation. Lastly, on debris piles, I want to be sure for the public's knowledge, the Board of County Commission is not responsible for debris pickup at schools. There are three items on our agenda tonight that are about debris pickups and measurement and the other things that we need to do in order to be FEMA reimbursed. As I've shared with the Board in the past, this is a reminder that our insurance does not help us with debris. Only FEMA can reimburse us for that, so there are specific steps that need to be taken. The school district is responsible for moving its, removing its own debris. Each of the solicitations, and I'll go through them by, I'll go through them, were previously approved by the Board. ITN N197361RC was originally approved by the Board for an expenditure up to $375,000 on June 28th. RFP 16025LAC was originally approved by the Board for an expenditure up to $100,000 on March 29. And the RFP 210330BJB was originally approved by the Board for $100,000 on April 12th. Because of Hurricane Ian, the expenditure cap on these particular solicitations is now much higher than what we originally assumed. I'll say it very simply. We budgeted for some trees to fall down in thunder and lightning storms. We had a lot more debris than we expected, so those three items are to expand up to those amounts to ensure that we can pay our contractors who specifically have removed the debris. At this point, I would open up to any of your discussions, I'm sorry, one more slide, United Way collaboration. As a good note, mattress distribution event occurred on 11/17 and 11/18. We partnered with United Way and Rooms to Go. We distribute over 750 mattresses, bed frames, and bedding to families impacted by Hurricane Ian. I'd also like you to realize, and the community to realize, that the thank-you video has also gone out to our school communities that helped us through the storm. Sent a very specific thank-you message to all the Superintendents and their workers who helped us get reopened so quickly. At this time, I don't have any comments other than what I provided, so I would entertain any Board discussion.
Is there any discussion from Board Members? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Mrs. Dupey Bruno, would you please address the item of public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. School Board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front of the center aisle. Please be advised that the Board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper during the public comment time is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time for speaker is three minutes if there are 20 speakers, two minutes if there are 30 speakers, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, they are, there are 31 speakers that wish to address the board this evening.
As Chair, I would like to make a motion, seeing we have so many people have come so far from Fort Myers Beach, that we expend our public comment time to two minutes for each person, that will make it one hour and two minutes with 31 speakers.
I second that. Mr. Speaker, there's a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. At this point, if you want to open up for discussion.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
I too agree.
Seeing that, let's take a vote. Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Jada Langford? Morgan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. The motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Speaker, just for the record, this is in compliance with Board Policy 1.10 where you suspended, and we do have a supermajority vote, so we will extend it to two minutes per person.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information for staff to follow up. These cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Ms. Dupay Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, will the following individuals please line up? John Cosse, Patrick Van Ness, Jenny Paradiso, Tessa Schmucker, Lea Lynch. And staff, if you could help them and show them where to line up, please, I would appreciate And the first speaker, John Cosse, if he would come down, please. Thank you. And then once Mr. Cosse is finished, you'll see the timer on the big screen. Once that timer is off and Mr. Cosse is finished, then the next person can just come on down. Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Cosse. September 28th is a day burned in my mind. I mean, it is the day me and my wife got married. Unfortunately, it's also the day my family lost everything. The experience is hard to put in words. I looked at it like, hey, we are good. We have our lives and we have each other, as some fellow residents weren't so lucky. We have so many things to deal with in rebuilding our entire lives. However, what keeps us awake at night is finding a way to bring some normalcy back to our children's lives. They don't verbalize it, but they're distraught. We're having issues with our children's emotional stability that never existed prior to this catastrophe. It's heartbreaking and makes you feel helpless as a parent, which is our most important job. Dr. Bernier's stated priorities are to lead with the student-centered philosophy and ensure that the district's strategic plan will meet the emotional and social needs of the students. He also talks about fiscal responsibility. I want to highlight the social-emotional needs our superintendent refers to. This school drives our community. Our kids and entire community would suffer a huge blow if our school is taken away. If this board prioritizes the current bottom line, it will change in our favor in the future over the social-emotional needs of not only kids but also our community. Talk to us first. You will find that we have people that are willing to help in every way because that's what our community is about. In closing, I demand, as a constituent of yours, that you do actually keep all options on the table. To do this, you need to open our school's doors for cleanup immediately. If a consulting firm told you no more damage can be done to a flooded facility by locking its doors and doing nothing, fire them, as they are a waste of our taxpayers' money. We have a historic building that FEMA 5050 does not apply to that can serve as a temporary facility for our kids. And yes, it will be insured, just as the rest of the Barrier Island schools in our districts will be insurable. If you cannot prioritize us and find the money in your budget, our community will provide the volunteers to make it happen. If you have not seen our island, please take a drive down and check it out. You will see we have lost our homes and most everything we have owned. What we have not lost is our hope for our community's future. But know this, a vote to shut down the beating heart of our community, Beach Elementary, is the first step in taking that hope away.
So I'm going to ask that you please just refrain from clapping. We want to make sure that we hear all the speakers and we keep the order in the chambers, please. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Van Ness. Like many Beach residents that are here tonight, I wear many hats. I'm a proud parent. I'm a Little League board member. I serve on the local LPA. I'm also a business owner and taxpayer. What you'll hear tonight is a united community with many concerns and many unanswered questions. And there is some level of frustration, and I hope you understand that. Given the limited time that we have tonight, we have everybody here with t-shirts, and I'd like everybody that's here for the beach to stand so you can see who this group is. And we'll have people address different issues. What I've done is I've prepared a summary sheet. I've handed that over to the clerk, and that summarizes all the issues that have been brought up. We'll try to keep it brief. We'll try to keep it positive. We want to let you know that we ask you to save our school. We also want to let you know that we are committed to helping. We want to be partners with the school board, and we want to make sure that we do everything we can to get a yes. We want to get to yes. Last but not least, I urge you to go back and look at your strategic plan. This is your plan. And when it comes to areas of impact and success factors, we have bullet points that are identified as family and community engagement and workforce success. And some of the key points under there is continued, to continue to build family and community partnerships and to increase business and community partnerships. That's what we're offering you. We are offering true partnership to work together to rebuild the school.
My name is Jeanette Tardif Paradiso. I'm the treasurer of the PTO of Fort Myers Beach Elementary. I went to Beach Elementary as a kid, and now my daughter is a student there. I am here because we need this school. We are one of the many families who has lost so much. There's an article in the Washington Post, "What Hurricane Ian Stole From Kids: Toys, Shoes, Stability, Home." The storm's toll could last a lifetime for youngsters. Dr. Bernier, you were co-loaded as saying we can minimize the impact in terms of amount of time out of school, but we cannot minimize the impact of what Ian did to us. We have to be prepared on a deeper level to deal with trauma and mental health. Respectfully, we all know that mental health in this district was bad pre-pandemic, it was bad pre-Ian, and now it's worse. I'm getting flyers sent home from elementary school about suicide, which unfortunately are conversations that we're having to have. The same article goes on to refer to life for these kids being like a seesaw. The more you build up the protective side of the seesaw, the more the child really has the ability to cope and come back very strong. Well, the protective factors for these kids are family and community. Beach School is a family. That building is a part of our family. She's our very own historical matriarch. The teachers and staff, my fellow parents and their children, all these people behind me, they are our family, and our children need them now more than ever. The community knows this. They're ready to do what needs to be done to get this school going. Please, let us clean up. It is not okay that it's still sitting in filth. With no remediation in sight, we have hundreds of volunteers ready to go. Give us waivers like the waivers for everything else. If we can sign a waiver for a field trip and a trip to the clinic, we can sign a waiver to clean the school. Our town council meeting yesterday, there was great points brought up about what we can do as a town to increase enrollment and help with the financial burden that we keep being reminded of.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Will the following individuals please line up? Ella Alfaro Maldonado, Joe Gilberti, Jerry Ware, Gregory Skazny, and Brendan Leslie. Thank you, Tessa.
Hello, my name is Tessa Moon Schmucker.
Tessa, just wait till they put the clock on the screen for you.
Hello, my name is Tessa Moon Schmucker. I am a fourth grader at Beach School. I have been there since kindergarten, and it has made me who I am today. Beach School is like my home, and the teachers are like my family. It is because of my Beach School teachers that I got a five on my FSA. My brother Silas is four. He has been so excited to start kindergarten at Beach School next year. Beach School is so important to all of us kids on the island. That is why I don't understand why you haven't even started cleaning it for us to go back. You have cleaned all of the other schools except ours. Aren't we important to you? Don't we matter too? I am here to ask you to please hurry and clean our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Okay. Next person would be Lea Lynch.
Hello, my name is Lea Lynch. I am the mother of Maverick Prim, who is a fourth grade student at Fort Myers Beach Elementary. Working on Fort Myers Beach has allowed us to be lucky enough to be a Beach School family since he started kindergarten. As a single parent and sole provider for my son, I have struggled and worked so hard to give him a good home and provide him with a life of opportunity that, to be honest, I questioned if I could provide for him like I wanted to at certain points in my life. Starting school at Fort Myers Beach Elementary was the first year of parenthood that the weight of stress I had been carrying to accomplish those dreams felt lighter, and I truly saw hope in providing all the things I wanted to give my son as a single parent. The individualized learning, the resources provided, and the overall care for the students is a combination that I truly feel blessed to have for my son. When I say overall care for the students, I don't just mean from the staff assigned to the classrooms. I mean the overall caring from each and every single faculty member at the school. I mean the care provided from the staff at Bay Oaks Recreation Center that provides after-school care while I work. I mean the care of the community that supports the families and the school itself, and I especially mean the care and love from the wonderful parents whose children attend the school and treat each other like family. This type of care and love provided for our children, from not just our school but from our community, gives me a sense of safety and peace that I wish I heard about more frequently when I hear talk of other schools. Our Beach kids are amazing and so very special. It is disappointing that this is even a question to reopen our school or not. I understand that the cost is a concern for rebuilding, but this is not only an investment in our children, but an investment in our future that will continue to grow and make better a world that needs more people like them. We are all here willing to do what it takes to keep the school open. Please give us a chance and don't give up on us.
Just a reminder about the clapping, because we want to move the comments along and the board does want to hear you. Alyssa's first student. Go ahead, Ella. Wait for, I'm sorry, wait for the clock. Okay, there you go.
Good evening. My name is Ella Alfaro Maldonado, and I'm a fifth grader at Fort Myers Beach Elementary. It all started in the fall of 2017 in kindergarten. I was welcomed with kind teachers and new friends. I remember walking into the school with my mother, holding her hand, and seeing decades' worth of past fifth graders' names and hands imprinted on the school sidewalks. I knew that one day my name and hands would be imprinted into the sidewalks, too. This year is my year, my fifth grade year for my imprints. This year, I was finally able to be the news anchor for the morning news, be the team captain, and lead my book battle to the, book battle team to the top three. Last year, we placed fifth. And be part of the safety patrol team. And now this has been taken away from me and my classmates due to Hurricane Ian. It breaks my heart to know that the school now just sits there untouched, that we have to meet early before the sun comes up at the Walmart every morning for our 40-minute bus ride to St. Carlos Park, all just to keep us together. I understand that Hurricane Ian was a devastating storm, and it took away my opportunity to imprint my hands into the sidewalk. But please don't take that opportunity away from future fifth graders like my little brother and his friends. I am from a community that is proud to say FM be strong, and I believe that we will be back stronger than ever. So as we rebuild our lives on our island, please don't forget our school.
Hey, everyone. Brendan Leslie. A lot of people know me as Florida's voice, but reporter hat is off, constituent hat is on. I don't know how I can follow the, her after that. She did a great job speaking. But I just wanted to point out, there was a funny article recently out of the Miami Herald that said, "How dare Governor Ron DeSantis get involved and get school board parents and, or school board politicians elected that care about the parents and get the parents more involved?" It's a novel idea. Parents having control of their own kids. It's a novel idea. For the first time ever since I've moved to the beautiful Lee County, I'm looking at a school board that I have faith in. I have a lot of faith, and I think there's going to be a lot of surprises at how strong and how unified you guys can come together. And you all did something already that was very impressive. You all voted unanimous to let these fine folks behind us speak longer. Listen, all they want to do is be heard. I know you're going to have to make a lot of tough decisions. I know it's going to be tough, but they just want to be heard. There's a, Hurricane Ian, none of us could have predicted. And honestly, I applaud every single one of you that are in here today, public comment and speaking because you're involved. This is what local politics is about. That's the beautiful thing about America and what we're doing. And I just wanted to say, I wish you all the best of luck moving forward because your job is not easy, especially with Hurricane Ian. And in closing, I would like to say, Jada Langford Fleming, it looks great having you up there on this board.
Hi, my name is Greg Skazny. I'm a parent of a Beach School kid. I'm a Little League coach. We've been told the opening of our school comes down to numbers. I've heard from more than one representative at the state level that there are only 10 kids that go to this island school. This is false. The current postseason data is there are 41 to 51 students that live in the 33931 area code. Regardless of whether the kids are island residents or not, is actually irrelevant. If many of the students come from off-island, it is consistent with our argument that the school is an important economic development, redevelopment, and recovery issue. The school is crucial to attracting and retaining employees on Fort Myers Beach. Fort Myers Beach and Estero Island have long been a net donor to Lee County's school system. Our seven-mile island contributes over $24 million annually to Lee County School District via property taxes alone, yet we only get a return benefit of less than $2 million annually to run our Beach School. While we provide a disproportionate amount of taxes to Lee County and the school district, we also experience a disproportionate amount of negative impacts resulting from tourism. As such, it's difficult to look at our Beach numbers in the vacuum and use single metrics to judge us. Fort Myers Beach is an integral part of Lee County, and investments into the community, such as the Beach School or Estero Boulevard improvements, are investments that benefit all of Lee County. The Beach School is an economic development issue. Business is on the need of school to attract and retain employees. Lee County needs Fort Myers Beach to attract and retain visitors. Additionally, our school is needed to attract families and ensure diversity on our island. The community, our island families, our Beach businesses, our parent-teacher organization, our town government are all committed to finding solutions to increase enrollment, reduce yearly operating costs, if that's all that matters. As for the capital expenditures associated with the Beach School, the school has been around for many years with little improvement in the last few decades. It would be interesting to compare expenditures made to Sanibel School, which allowed to expand to the middle school and increase enrollment numbers. Fort Myers Beach deserves that same consideration. These kids have suffered enough. It's time to tell us what we need to do to save our school. We are well ready and willing to step up to the challenge. Thank you very much.
Will the following individuals please line up? Ali Curran, Natalie Hinkley, Art Monahan, Jesse Field, Jackie Lisack.
Good evening to the board, and congratulations to our newcomers. I pray that you will be led, that your steps be ordered by the Lord. This evening, I'm asking your attention because three weeks ago, a mother called me at 8:30 at night in distress, stating that I cannot find my child. So I said, "What happened?" And she said that he was taken to six of our cypress to the Sheriff Department and to have been transported to DJJ. So I said, "Okay, backup, you need to tell me what happened." She said that the child was accused, a 10-year-old child was accused, her child, was accused of having taken a of having taken a knife on the school bus. The Sheriff Department came to her home 11 o'clock at night and asked to search that room for the knife. The mother and the father allowed it to happen. Nothing was found. The child told them that it was candy. The next morning, the Sheriff Department came back. The left came back again at 12 and said, "We must take your child to the Sheriff Department." The mother followed the child down to Six Mile Cypress where she was told that the child would be sent to DJJ. Nine hours later, the child is still there. Mother does not know where her child is. I said, "Let me get up out of my bed and go with you." 30 minutes later, she said, "Don't come this way." He's at DJJ. I'm sorry, but can you imagine? This child was shackled by the legs, handcuffed for nine hours. Can you please find out what happened? I cannot reveal the child's name at this time because I promised the mother that I would, but please check with the Sheriff Department about that procedure. Thank you.
Good evening, school board. My name is Joe Gilberti. I'm a professional engineer. Went to University of Florida. I live on 385 Denora Boulevard, Fort Myers Beach. I asked the lady over here to hand you a letter. It's a workshop for a transmission main coming down CSX. We want to take CSX through eminent domain. I have a ranch in Sarasota that has a secret underground river the government hid. It's got unique spring water. Tap water is based on cancer rates, so your water bills would go down. Everyone out here would basically have Fiji to the tap. Certain things that I'm asking for you all to do is take a look at the workshop letter that I gave to Commissioner Hammond in District 4 just before the hurricane. I've got the permits already to Peace River Pump Station. The railroad track kind of goes right into my land. The government's been pretty much subduing me for about 10 years because these things are everywhere. I've secured another one at Washington Rock in New Jersey where we're 25 miles away from New York and their aqueducts are about to fail, so that's more of a different issue. This one, because tap water is based on cancer rates, when you soak, take a shower, you're soaking a liter of water. It's in your eyes and ears, so the level of service is huge. So the hurricane basically knocked down the bridges to CSX. Seminole Gulf Railway just leases it. So with, you guys are right off the track here, so if you coordinated with me, we can take the track from here all the way up to say Punta Gorda Airport and I'm already going to be servicing the Peace River Reservoir. So I've had a 300-mile pipeline into permit on 75, but the CSX railway is much faster. There's no traffic. So in 18 months, from Sarasota to Naples, you could have basically the most unique water we've ever seen on the planet. The readings are there. No one's ever seen calcium and magnesium that high. It's basically a tilted platform from the Yucatan meteor impact. It's a crater in the Gulf of Mexico. The other one in New York's a buried volcano. It's like got to do with oceans beneath the earth. But my time's up. You can call me anytime. I'm going to leave cards here for my website.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ali Curran and I have lived in Fort Myers Beach for 47 years. And I have been in this board different times, so thanks that they try not to help our Beach School. But I have faith in you panel that you will help our Beach School because I had a daughter that was a Beach kid, a son Beach kid, and now a granddaughter who's a Beach kid. We are a family. We would love, Dr. Bernier, I really have a lot of faith that how you opened all the schools so fast. I really, really appreciate that so much and all your panel and just please consider our Beach School because our Beach School is not only just a school, but it's a family. We are not only friends, but we're family. And I've been there for a long time and I know how it is. And I just want every kid, please get up and say, "Hey, Beach kids, we need you. We need you. We really need your vote." And that's really, I have to say, thank you and I appreciate it. Yes, I've done this before with other kids and I thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Art Monahan. Excuse me. I'm a resident of Fort Myers Beach last 20 years. I was born in South Florida and my kids, who are now in college, went to Beach Elementary. We have a great pride in our Beach Town. And I want to start with the word Beach Town or Beach Community because you as school board members actually control a very important decision with this decision on what you do with Fort Myers Beach Community School. I think I should almost be talking to county commissioners or having conversations with town councilmen, but they don't hold the power right now. Everybody knows is that a Beach School is key. It's integral to a Beach community. We're at a fork in the road. If you take away Beach School, it will forever change our Beach Town. We're not just a tourist destination. We have kids that are born around here. We have kids that have been here. We have several people in the audience that are second generation. Beach Elementary students on my street alone, all these, one of my neighbors. We have people that have lived here 30, 40 years on one street. The community needs something and it's a school that will attract family members to move to the island, families to come here and grow a community. We can't just be a tourist destination. That decision is in your hands. All the good that will come from a community is follows in the future downstream from your decision. The town council members, the Lee County Commissioners, they can't make a community. It's the school district that has a decision that will lead to strengthening a community. This is my fourth hurricane in Florida. We can rebuild.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jesse Field. I'm a proud father of two amazing girls, Dylan and Casey. They attend Fort Myers Beach Elementary. Our journey began in 2020. We lived in Manhattan Beach, California, never thought we would ever leave. That changed when our kids were forced to go to Zoom School. Fast forward, three moves, two states. We decided to move to Florida. The choice was an easy one, but the journey was long and difficult. The girls had to be uprooted multiple times just to find a place that would give them a world-class education. Once we came over the bridge, Fort Myers Beach, we thought we hit the lottery. It was the first time in two years we finally felt like we were home. We thought our girls were getting a great education in Manhattan Beach. It's nothing compared to Fort Myers Beach Elementary. Our girls were behind in every subject. The teachers at the Beach School went above and beyond for all the students, including our own. They welcomed our daughters immediately and with open arms and got right back to work and catching them up. The teachers are passionate about what they do and they work day and night to give our kids a proper education. Our kids are not only doing well, they're doing really well. The school has been designated as a School of Excellence by the state four consecutive years. In 2022 report, Fort Myers Beach had the highest score of any elementary school in the entire state. We should be figuring out a way to save a huge asset, not, not a way to shut it down. What I'm supposed to, what am I, what are we supposed to tell our kids that have been through so much? Hey, when things get hard, you're supposed to just give up? My job as a father is to raise strong women and that is exactly what I'm going to do. They know that tough times never last, tough people do. Thank you for the time and we really hope you do what's right. Fort Myers Beach, strong.
Will the following individuals please line up? Alicia Catlett, Sherry Skipper, Olivia Hicks, Jane Plummer, Scott Vanslow. And the next speaker can come on down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Natalie Hinkley. I moved to Fort Myers Beach five years ago and when I tell you that the Fort Myers Beach School has been incredible for my children, I can't explain to you how happy my kids are every day when they come home from school. You know, we're blessed that we're able to take the kids to school on a boat. You know, they have incredible teachers. Unfortunately, we lost everything due to the hurricane. Our kids are struggling. If you think that we are struggling as parents, as adults, our children are struggling. They need some sort of normalcy. I feel like the school has been nothing but a family to us, so we feel like, please don't take it away from us because our children's lives are in your hands. I'm so happy that Sanibel is going to be opening in December. I mean, I think that's incredible, but I feel like our school is being overlooked and we just don't want to feel like we're being overlooked. I know that we don't have a lot of numbers in our school, but there's so many other ways where you bring others, like more numbers to our school by maybe extending 33931 to Summerlin, maybe making the school Magnet School. I'm sure there's a lot of options, but right now, all we need is for our school to be opened and not just sit there and rot because nothing has been going on in our school. If you drive by, there's literally just wood little panels all over the windows and everything's just rotting and it's molding up and it's disgusting. And I think that if you guys need help, you've heard it from each one of us, that we are able to go and help. We'll bring the community together. We'll help raise money. We've done that many a times for our school with fundraisers and we'll do that for our school, so please don't overlook us. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Jackie Lisak. I'm the president and executive director of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here tonight to represent the Beach businesses that are located in, on Fort Myers Beach and in the surrounding areas. And I need to let you guys know how very, very important this school is to our overall community. It's not just an elementary school. It's not just an island. It is a part of the fabric of our community that weaves through every section and piece and person who calls this island home, who works on this island, who visits our island. The business community on the beach really, really benefits from this school, not only in that the folks who come to work on the beach are able to bring their children there and are able to enroll their children and get an education that we feel is superior to many, many other places in the country, as you've heard other people contest to. But our Beach was undergoing a major renaissance as it was and this hurricane has kicked us into super mode. And without this school anchoring our community, our families and our, and our livelihoods on the beach, we fear that our community may change to just a vacation destination, just a tourism spot. And those of us in the business community do not want to see that. We want the option to bring our children to the Beach School. I was not fortunate enough to go there. I've been on the beach since the mid-'70s, but if I had children, I'd want them to go there. You need to know that our business community is standing strong and is willing to do whatever it will take to show you the economic and financial path to returning our Beach School to Fort Myers Beach. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia Catlett, speaking on behalf of Fort Myers Beach Elementary Classroom Teachers. I've been part of our Beach family for 25 years. I've made the commute 20 miles each way all of those years, just to be part of this neighborhood school. It is so rewarding and worth it. The fate of our school is being decided by numbers, so I'd like to take you over just a few of them. There has been a school on the island since the 1930s. The Beach School has a long history of academic excellence. We've been an A school for many years, exceeding the expectations that are set by the district and the state. We are currently ranked third in the district and 188th in the state over, out of four, over 4,000 schools. And we're doing this with 67% of our population qualifying for free reduced lunch. In my classroom, 100% of my students foundational skills are on or above grade level. That is with three other languages spoken other than English. And 88% of them are displaced from their homes. We're a hidden gem and doing amazing things on this island. For businesses on this island, we're an added value and an incentive for their employees. They will drive and have over the bridge in season traffic to work so that they can bring their children to our school, knowing that they're not just a number. Their kids receive the very best education with our warm, encouraging dolphin family. There's also been an ebb and flow to our student population as reflected by our families on the island. As the island rebuilds, we are able to accommodate and increase in student population. If the numbers are a deciding factor, please send us more kids. We are...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. So I saw some people doing this. That's fine. People can do this. That's fine. Any of those gestures are fine instead of clapping, so we can just move the public comments. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Sherry Skipper and I'm officially the K2 literacy coach, but as we all do at the Beach, I wear many hats and have many different responsibilities. At the Beach School, we always do what's necessary and we do it well. As the data reflects, we teach. Fort Myers Beach Elementary has a veteran, highly effective staff. In good times and in bad, we show up for our kids and we teach. When a global pandemic hits, we teach. When a hurricane tries to destroy us, we teach. Let us continue to teach our kids. The mission of Lee County Schools is to teach each student the social and academic skills needed to become a responsible and productive citizen. We do that. How have we been and continue to be so successful? This is a small school environment. That's the aspect. Collectively as a group, we care for both the academic and the emotional needs of the students. Kids come first. We build relationships with each other, the students and their families. It's fundamental and lends itself to an intrinsic support network. We are close to our kids. The entire staff knows every student by name. As research has shown, small neighborhood schools are highly successful. We're proof of that. We've done our job. We hope that we will continue to do so and lead the district for many years. Please recognize what an asset we are. We set, today is an opportunity for you to set a precedent of doing what's best for children, what's best for our students. At Fort Myers Beach Elementary, we provide the type of school experience for its students that all schools should aspire to. Allow us to continue to do that. Fort Myers Beach Elementary is all that is good and right with education. It's an honor to serve.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Tara Jenner, Corey Francisco, Sharon McGill, Melissa Wright, John King. Can we have a member of staff please help our next speaker?
The podium lowers.
Sherry.
The podium comes, the podium comes down.
It won't? It's, it should go up and down.
Oh, the podium.
There you go. Okay, just wait for the timer to come up on the screen, okay? There you go.
Hi, my name is Olivia Hicks. I am a student of Fort Myers Beach Elementary. I've been going to FMBE for three and a half years now. My school is important to me because of its small size and all of my fellow classmates and teachers. They're all so kind and makes the school feel like home. I miss the beautiful sunrise I saw every morning as I came over the island bridge. That welcoming feeling can't be matched. I miss being at a small school. At FMBE, I knew all the teachers, staff, and students by name. St. Carlos is such a big school, it is hard to find my way around. During the first week, I actually got lost trying to find my way to the classroom. I miss the feeling of family at FMBE. Every teacher there cares about your happiness and education. It was obvious to me that the students were always the top priority of the teachers. We were a family. We were a family. I truly miss that feeling and want that feeling back again. Every day, I was eager to come to school and learn because of the warmth there. I no longer feel that way about going to St. Carlos Elementary. The best decision for my future education is to be back at a small school again. Please rebuild my little school and give us all a place where we feel that warmth again.
Thank you.
I'm Jane Plummer, Fort Myers Beach resident for, since 1989. Going to embarrass my kids and make them stand up, Katie and Courtney, and my two granddaughters, Malia and Kaya. Saving them for speaking to you tonight, so that's four less people. We moved here in 1989. Katie was three years old, Courtney was eight months old. They went to the Victory Learning Montessori School and then went through K through five. My grandchildren couldn't wait to go to their moms and titties grade school and grow up with some of the same teachers they had and experience the beach school. Because every year at the shrimp festival, the kids gather at the 7-Eleven from all ages of the beach school and they go back and take a picture at the beach school. This is family, this is community. These kids grew up here and they know each other. And when we had an event at Kiwanis just the other night, the beach kids were there. We took a beach kids Bay Oaks picture. I mean, it's about what we are. So I missed what I was talking about, but anyway. The point is, the beach school is important and we are not just a tourist destination. We are a community. If I didn't have, my husband passed away in 1995 and I had the beach school and the families there and Bay Oaks that kept me able to work and the kids were in school and taken care of during the day. And I knew that at night, we would go to the Bay Oaks and do baseball, football, basketball, everything. And that's where our life was. That was a hub of our life. And it's important to realize that it is the center of our community. And so I'm very involved in the town of Fort Myers Beach. I'm the chair of the LPA. I served, I've done that for the last 17 years. I'm on the Bay Oaks, I was on Bay Oaks Advisory for 10 years, historical-
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you, audience.
My name is Scott Vancello. I used to work at Bay Oaks Recreation Center right next to beach school. We had an after-school program where students walked literally right across the field to get support and fish in their homework, do arts and crafts and get physical activity. Bay Oaks and the beach school were a special partnership that worked together to provide for the children and families of Fort Myers Beach. I'm now a professor at FGCU. Part of my research is related to a concept known as sense of place. It's about the relationship between people and spatial settings. Sense of place is linked to a sense of belonging. A sense of belonging contributes to children's overall social and emotional development. Beach school provides a sense of place, both to students and to members of the community. Students who go through the beach school feel a strong sense of belonging to the community from yelling "Go beach!" during sporting events, or pretty much whenever, to getting the island tattooed to their body, to turning out to school board meetings. Students literally put their mark on the school when they engraved their name on the sidewalk when they graduate fifth grade, as I did in 1986 and my uncle did in 1954. Without a school, Fort Myers Beach would be perceived and experienced much differently. There's a risk, it will no longer be a place that people want to live, work, or even visit. There is therefore, an economic benefit to enhancing sense of place. The beach school is a unique location near special places like the beach, Metan's Past Preserve, the Ostero Island Historic Society, the Beach Library and Bay Oaks, providing an opportunity to provide an educational philosophy known as place-based education. Place-based education seeks to help communities through employing students and staff in solving community problems. Because of Hurricane Ian and other environmental and socioeconomic factors, Fort Myers Beach is a community that has problems. The beach school can play an important part in helping solve them. In conclusion, without the beach school, Fort Myers Beach is in jeopardy of becoming an entirely different type of place with less belonging. Before making a decision on its future, please consider sense of place, look beyond the surface of economic costs and benefits and think creatively about solutions possibly including collaborations with Bay Oaks and FGCU. Thank you.
Tara Jenner. The new board members showed their true colors tonight. So much for promises and comments made during your campaign. Each of the new members said at one point or other that they stopped coming to meetings because they were not listened to by the board as members of the public. Based on your failure to even second Mrs. Giovinelli's motion before electing the board chair and vice chair, you've made it clear that it's business as usual from the dais and that only the faces have changed. I have two rhetorical questions for you. What are you so afraid of? What are you so scared of that you couldn't agree to a few minutes where public comment could be made to share about the character, abilities, et cetera, of those who are running for board chair and vice chair positions? Where there's an authority in that position to cast a tiebreaker vote, place item on the agenda, set the schedule, appoint additional people to committees, and so much more that lead directly to action items? The answer to those rhetorical questions is, nothing. There's nothing scary about it when you prevent the public who are talking to elected officials to listen to we, the people. I really encourage this board to revisit Board Policy 1.11. The amount of time it takes to walk from the back of the room down to here, the clapping will be done. It won't disrupt and it won't extend the comment time period or your meeting. The placards that these children created to show their support for their school were forced to be left outside. Why is it not changed so that these kids, or anybody for that matter, can bring in placards as long as it doesn't interfere with egress and ingress and the ability to maintain a safe environment for handicap access, fire prevention and so forth, and the visual views of people? Please reconsider these things. Thank you very much and thank you for the-
Hi, my name is Cory Francisco and I am a resident of Fort Myers Beach for over 30 years. I had my daughters go to Beach Elementary School, as well as a grandson go to Beach Elementary School. And actually, when we moved to Fort Myers Beach, when you drove over that bridge, it said, "Welcome to the family island." So, I mean, how can we have a family island without a school? I was so shocked and really sad when I recently found out that the doors of Fort Myers Beach Elementary School have not been opened to be cleaned. I mean, I don't understand that when all the other schools have been entered and cleaned, you know, without a decision made, but still, just to go along in that first step for us as a community. I mean, it is a community. I mean, and as you could see, we're a lot of passionate people. The beach residents and the community, we pull together because we're passionate and we care about each other. And part of our community is a school. And I get the whole attendance and the numbers, but over the years, I have seen it fluctuate tremendously. So this is a rough season right now. We're just coming off of COVID and now a storm. So I just pray and hope that you guys will take careful consideration and think of the community of Fort Myers Beach. Without a school, it's not a community. I mean, I haven't had children or grandchildren in the school in decades.
Thank you, ma'am. Will the following individuals please line up? Charlie Whitehead, Tom Torgoso, and Kristy Divageli.
I'm a beach school mom. My son has been there since kindergarten. He's now in fourth grade. In addition to being a beach school mom, I'm a hospitality worker on Fort Myers Beach for the last 12 years. Fort Myers Beach is Lee County's cash cow. We brought in more tourism dollars than even Sanibel last year. The people come for the weather and maybe the beach, but let's be honest, Sanibel's beaches are more pristine than ours. So why do they come back to us every year in Fort Myers Beach? Because of us, because of the vibe we bring. The locals and the people they meet in their local bar, the employees at their hotel, the table next to them while they're eating breakfast, or the guy who runs them their jet ski. Sorry. I have customers who come to see me with their luggage in hand before they even check into their hotels. We're the ambassadors of Fort Myers Beach and we can't work there if there's no school. It takes a minimum of two hours to get off the island for most of the school year. So if I get off work at 5:00, how can I get to, say, Heights Elementary, which is the closest school to us, by 6:00? I can't. So who's going to work at your restaurants? Who's going to clean your hotels? Who's going to run the parasol boats? Who's going to be the ambassadors for Fort Myers Beach and Lee County? Please rebuild our school. Since I have a little extra time, I'd like to say how great the school is. They care about our kids and our kids about them. My son has hearing loss, which is considered a disability. He was behind in reading when he came back to school after COVID. Yet his first time taking the FSA, he got a 5. Because of his teachers, because of his school, and because it's rated number three in Lee County and 188 in state. I know enrollment is low, but that's because of COVID. We lost about half our enrollment after COVID and more with Ian because people can't drive to St. Carlos Park. Make it easier for them to come there. Tell the employees that their kids can go there. The teachers want them there. We have room for them. Please.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you like to share your name with the board?
I'm sorry, it's Melissa Wright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John R. King, Fort Myers Beach Town Council. I'm here to support the students and parents of Fort Myers Beach Elementary School as they seek the reopening of their school. It's our school. A school is ranked A by the district according to the school's own website. I listened to the passionate pleas to us as a town council during our meeting on November 14th. The parents who spoke, some one-time students, shared the rich history of the beach school. These parents know how deeply ingrained this school is in our Fort Myers Beach community as a whole. It's a bedrock, as well as a cornerstone, to our family-friendly town. If you close this school, you'll tear the heart out of a community that took a pounding from Hurricane Ian, but is already starting to get back on its feet. As an elected official, I understand the bottom line, dollars and cents of decision-making. However, you'll be making a critical error if that's all you're basing this decision on. You cannot measure the desire of these students. You cannot measure the desire of these parents or this community to do whatever it takes to reopen beach school and support it going forward. You cannot measure the potential new student base that will be there as Fort Myers Beach rebuilds and as the Margaritaville Resort opens, bringing a workforce that will need this school. I respectfully ask that you work with our community to rebuild the beach school and be a part of the reemergence of Fort Myers Beach. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Charlie Whitehead. I've been a beach resident for almost 40 years. I'm going to tell you why I'm a beach resident. The late 90s, my wife Debbie and I had two young daughters and a son on the way. We thought long and hard about where we should be because the place we were in was not big enough for us. We could have moved inland, bought ourselves a nice three-bedroom house somewhere with a big yard and a garage. We didn't do that. We kept our little lot and we put a bigger home on it. And the reason we did that was so our kids could go to the neighborhood school, Fort Myers Beach Elementary. The reason- They did go there and it was wonderful. They had great teachers, they had great friends. I served on the school advisory committee there for years. My wife served on the PTO. Like so many beach parents before us and after us, we did all we could to support our school. We still see it as our school. It is the heart of our community. These people here speaking to you have been punched hard in the gut. Please don't cut out the community's heart. And I beat two minutes. I seldom do that.
Well, the following individuals, please line up. Susan Elliott, Devon North, and Dan Ellers.
My name's Tom Torgerson. I live on Fort Myers Beach with my wife Mary. We have two daughters that have homes on Fort Myers Beach. I'd like to speak to you from a little different twist. I own a shipyard on St. Carlos Island. I'm co-developer and owner of the Margaritaville Resort that's under construction on Fort Myers Beach. So speaking a little bit to you from a business owner's perspective, Fort Myers Beach is going to be a jewel again. You can count on it. You have to believe in us. Do not write us off. The businesses that are going to rebuild need you, need this school. We need you to make the right decisions. You can talk about numbers all you want to. We are not a burden to the school district. Far from that. We have never, ever been a burden, financial burden to this school district. And not only that, the excess contribution we make to the overall school district is going to excel. You've got to look out the windshield, and you will, I trust you will. Look out the windshield at what Fort Myers Beach is going to be and can be again in resurrection. We, the numbers are in our favor. You hear the gut-wrenching stories, the gut-wrenching stories here of how great the school is, how great the community is, and how much better it can be. Please allow that to happen. It's you people, somebody else said it. The county commissioners are wonderful. We have great leadership in this county. But you know what? You are the people that will instill the fabric, that will make Fort Myers Beach something again. We need your support. We beg of your support. We think you will do the right thing. And don't let, anybody can play with statistics and twist them any way they want to. The numbers are in our favor. Thank you.
Kristy Divageli. Congratulations to our newly-elected members of the board. I'm eager to see how each of you respond to the families of Fort Myers Beach. Onto the reason why I'm here tonight. I watched the reorg meeting the other day where many of you expressed your reasons for running. As you all know, I too ran for the seat that you're sitting in. I ran to serve as oversight for my community and a watchdog over our taxpayer dollars. I was disappointed that none of you mentioned running for those reasons that day and instead only mentioned running because the meetings were so contentious. Yes, the meetings were contentious, but that's because there's been a lot of corruption happening behind closed doors and some of the board members participated in it whilst some were fighting against it. Our district has a history of using power and money to silence children, parents and employees, and vendors. They've accomplished this over the years by paying millions of dollars to attorneys for a litany of issues. For example, over $2 million paid to Henderson Firm in 2019, 2020. $35K paid to a special attorney to represent Ms. Patrica. And that doesn't even include the invoices, which were paid to Jim Fox's firm to defend the district against the Oaks's lawsuit. It's at this time I'd like to submit those bills into the public record. While reading them, I was shocked to discover there was a plot to violate the plaintiff's rights by hiding discovery from him by failing to release phone records for months. Our district has already lost the Sunshine Case to this same person, yet you continue to fight him in the same way you fought Gabriela Perez, spending over $200,000 when all she initially requested was the principal be held accountable. There was a $22,000 spent on the Raimi Hall cheerleading bullying investigation, which was already proven. And now you are choosing to fight Tara Jenner, a community member that only wanted the board to honor public comment before appointing a new chair, when she requested a settlement with no cost to the district. I could keep going, but I'm running out of time. So I implore you all to take a serious look at the invoices I am submitting today. If the district is willing to hide discovery from plaintiffs like Alfie Oaks, I can only imagine what they are willing to do to the children and employees. This is-
Thank you, Ms. Divageli. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Folks, we have a board policy that does not allow clapping, so please, if we could, for the decorum in the chambers. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Susan Elliott, and I'm a resident of Fort Myers Beach. I have one grandchild that is a first grader at Fort Myers Beach Elementary, one more that will enter next year into kindergarten, and another son and daughter-in-law that are residents of the beach that will soon have children that hopefully will attend Fort Myers Beach Elementary. I have three things to basically go over. Obviously, I have a personal tie to the beach elementary. They've done amazing things for my grandson, which I will allow my son to speak to. But also from a business perspective, I do own a real estate company, and schools dictate real estate values. They dictate a lot of the sense of community. It is very, very important for our community, especially post-Ian, that we have an elementary to attract young families and to attract young workers to our island. So it's very important. Also, logistically, for us to be able to drive our children and grandchildren off the island to a school or even a bus pickup for them to then have a long drive on a bus is just a logistic nightmare. I just really wish that you would reconsider that. I personally will do anything possible financially or work-related to help with the renovation of the school. And as far as that goes, my husband will as well. By December 13th, when the next meeting is scheduled, there will already be significant other problems that are presented. So please, I just ask you to consider opening up the school and allowing people to work on it. Thank you and have a good evening.
Hello, my name is Devin Nurse. I moved to this community four years ago from a small farm town in Ohio with two small kids and not knowing their future and not knowing what kind of environment they were going to be in, and feared that they would always just be a number and that they would be lost in the system unless I homeschooled. Instead, I found a small community and teachers and staff that have poured love and taught my son things that I wasn't sure was going to be possible at his age. This school for him is his sense of identity. He loves it. He comes home every day excited and happy. He begs me not to pick him up early from Bay Oaks, and that's saying a lot for a child. I live and work on the island, and right now, we're all going through a lot emotionally, and this is the last thing that I want to do after working seven hours and going to other things. We're all trying to rebuild this community. I work for the only plumber based on the island, and there's only three of us left, and we're working 12- to 15-hour days right now trying to help people get rebuilt. I just hope that this is the last thing that I have to worry about and that he can return and that other kids can experience the things that my kids have been able to. Thank you.
Is Sharon McGill in the audience? If so, can you please line up?
Mr. Superintendent and school board members, my name is Mayor Dan Allers. I'm here today about the Fort Myers Beach Elementary School on behalf of the town council, concerned residents, businesses, anxious parents, and affected schoolchildren. The beach school, as affectionately known by all residents, is a cornerstone of our tight-knit community, is an integral part of our history, our heritage, and our identity. The beach school is part of our community's rich fabric and has been loved and supported by island families, businesses, and community groups for generations. It has come to our attention that the school's existence is uncertain and that the school board is questioning the feasibility of rebuilding the school. Our community answer to that question is an emphatic yes. We are united and resolute in our position that the beach school must be rebuilt. You can surely appreciate the positive long-term effects that good schools, dedicated teachers, and outstanding educational opportunities provide to the individuals, families, and communities. After enduring the educational disruptions of COVID and the recent destruction of their homes and school, our community needs your help. Together, we can restore a sense of stability and bring hope for a bright future to our children. We ask that you give them comfort and permanency in this extraordinary time of upheaval by ensuring that they can go back to their beloved school. The beach school will be a crucial asset in attracting new investment, businesses, families, and workers as the town rebuilds. Our unique geography, seasonal conditions, significant school tax receipts, and outsized contribution to the county's economy justifies and warrants the investment of an elementary school on Fort Myers Beach. We respectfully request that you vote to save our school, and we commit to help you to find solutions, find funding, and work to increase enrollment to pre-COVID and Ian levels. Our community is resilient and optimistic about our future, but we need support from the broader community to sustain growth and continue to be an integral part.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
I want to thank everyone that spoke tonight. That was a tremendous display of not only school spirit but community spirit. Thanks again. We're going to move on to approval of consent items. The documentation for action items listed under the consent is made available to board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have been briefed or workshop with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull from discussion under the unfinished business tabled items portion of the agenda? Mr. Fisher.
No, I do not. Sorry. No, I do not have any items I wish to pull, Mr. Persons.
Ms. Giavelli.
I have none.
Ms. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming.
I have none.
Ms. Jordan.
That's okay, I have none either.
Left your name off here.
That's okay.
Mrs. Morgan.
I have none. Thank you.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items? Mr. Fisher, second.
I second.
Motion to approve. Okay. The motion is moved by Mr. Fisher and seconded by Mrs. Langford Fleming. Is there any discussion? This will be a recall, a roll call vote. Please signify by saying a or nay. Mr. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Giavanelli.
Mrs.
Mrs.
Aye.
Mrs. Patrica.
Yes, please.
Mrs. Jordan.
Yes, please.
Mrs. Langford Fleming.
Aye.
And Mrs. Morgan.
Aye.
And I am an aye. The motion carries 7-0. Dr. Meneer, please introduce any administrators in attendance with a new assignment that were approved.
Mr. Chair, we have two appointments of administrators on this particular agenda. The first is Valerie Clark. She'll be joining Fort Myers Technical College as a program manager for the technical college. Could she please stand and be recognized? Want to thank her and her family who are with her this evening. Second assignment is Jennifer Robinson. She'll be located now within our communications division. She was our new coordinator of community engagement. Mr. Chair, I would also like to recognize Clara Diaz, who's joining us as the equity coordinator, based upon the good cause action this evening. Those are all the appointments for this evening.
Okay. From here, do we have any, from the board? I think we've done all our business. So, Mr. Fisher, do you have any comments?
Yes, Chair. I want to thank all the Fort Myers Beach parents that came out and the business owners and the members of that community who are listening, and I really do appreciate you coming out here and taking your time. So you guys have gone through the unimaginable, and I can tell you we're listening and that I can tell you for being on the job the first few hours, we have not made any decisions at this point. So I look forward to listening to more from you. I also want to point out three of the students, Ms. Schumacher, Ms. Alfredo Maldonado, excuse me, and Ms. Hicks. I don't know if you're still here at all, but I want to say that was very brave of the three of you to speak. Your parents should be so proud of you, so it was great to hear from you. Thank you as well to Councilmember King, I believe that was here, as well as congratulations to new Mayor Allers. I know he is a fighter for Fort Myers Beach, so thank you for taking your time, Mayor Allers out here. Outside of that, I just want to say, I want to echo, I'm excited. I think this was a good meeting. I'm excited for this new board. I've said that. I look forward to working through many of these issues, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Vanelli.
Yes. I just want to thank all the Fort Myers Beach residents and even the people that came out here to support them. I understand their angst and wanting normalcy, so I would just want them to know that I've heard you and I'm excited to get to work to have resolution for your school and what that looks like. And I know the superintendent and his staff are working diligently on that to have some opportunities and options that's going to be best for the community of Fort Myers Beach. I also would like to, just to make sure that the superintendent's going to check in with Ms. Jerry Ware regarding some information that she brought up tonight. I think that's really important, that we get to the bottom of that situation, and there's always two sides to a story, but it's how it's reported to that person that conveys it back to us sometimes can be different. But, so, we want to make sure that we're helping all our residents. I'm excited because it is a new day, it's a new board, and so I want to congratulate everyone on this board. I want to congratulate the chair and the vice chair. I'm excited to work with you. I know that we're going to do great things for our students of Lee County. I just want to wish the staff a happy Thanksgiving. You've earned your time off. Enjoy, relax, eat a lot of turkey, and be thankful and grateful and blessed. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Patrica.
Thank you. I would normally give my board update during our briefing, but we haven't had one of those, so I'm going to update you guys on a couple of things that I would normally do in the afternoon. But first, I want to address Fort Myers Beach. I am your representative. I mean, we're all your representatives, but I am elected out of District 3, which encompasses Fort Myers Beach. I will be having a community forum on Monday, December 5th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at Skip One Seafood on San Carlos Boulevard. I have asked the superintendent to please push that out through district channels, social media, Parent Link, all of that. I'm doing that because I think they deserve access to their elected in a less formal setting. So to let the public know, that's what I'm doing, and to let my colleagues know as well. I'd like to address Tessa, Ella, and Olivia. You wrote down their last names, I didn't. They were unbelievably adorable, unbelievably well-spoken, and one of them asked if they were important and if they mattered. And absolutely, yes, you are important, and yes, you do matter to me. You know, we've talked a few times about things that keep us up at night. In my one-on-ones with the superintendent, this has become just about the only thing we're talking about. Fort Myers Beach is not being overlooked. It is an incredibly, incredibly complicated issue, and, you know, a lot of people talked about dollars and cents. I represent Fort Myers Beach, but I also represent Lehigh, and I represent Cape Coral, and I represent the entire community, every student in this community and every school in this community. And it would be irresponsible for me to make a decision regarding this school unless I have all of the data and all of the information that I need. And I don't have that. The superintendent doesn't have that. Staff doesn't have that. We are working diligently to gather the information that we need in order to make the best decision, not just for Fort Myers Beach but for all of Lee County. Moving on to Florida High School Athletic Association, we did have a board meeting. I don't even remember when it was at this point, but we had two things I want to highlight. First of all, we are likely going to see a change to the EL2 form. The EL2 form asks questions of female athletes that it does not ask of male athletes. Those questions are important for a healthcare provider to be able to assess a female student's ability to compete in athletics without injury. That being said, all of that information is now being turned over to the schools, and we have asked our sports medicine advisory committee to look at the form and determine how we can just have the doctor sign the last page as an affidavit, and then the doctor keeps the private medical information listed on the first two pages, and then they only turn the last page into the school district. So I wanted to update you on that. The other thing is football classifications. I've had several coaches reach out to me, not just here in Lee County, but I represent school boards for the southern part of the state. Several have reached out to me to ask whether the metro suburban is going to change, and the answer is no. That is a two-year classification cycle. It is already coming up in conversation, and I know that the board and staff are looking at it, but we do have another full football season next year with the current classification model. Moving on to FSBA, the committee work is well underway to include legislative platform. I'm excited. I think everybody here is going up there next week, and I'm really excited for you guys to dive into that committee work and really get to know your colleagues across the state. The networking opportunities there are invaluable. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Decimores and Forden Associates for getting me the information that I needed to feel comfortable making the vote tonight. On the tax anticipation note, I know I pushed hard, and I appreciate you getting that for me. And finally, I am really happy to be working with our new board members. I am genuinely thrilled to be sitting here with you. It was really, really wonderful to see you and your families and your children here. You know, I mentioned to your spouses and to some of your kids, this is a full family commitment, and it's going to be hard sometimes, it's going to be harder on your families than it is on you. So just try to keep that in mind as you move forward, and especially kids and social media and all that, it can get tough on them. And then watching your daughter swear you in was like a goosebump moment for me, because it's, I mean, it's family, right? That's why, it's our why. So just really, really, really a great day as far as I'm concerned, and lots to be thankful for. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Jordan.
Thank you. Miss.
Miss.
Misses, please. Thanks. Anyways, I just want to say to our students who came here, I just, my heart, just, they melt at my heart, and I appreciate them very much for coming up here and standing here before us and speaking. That is extremely difficult. To all of the people from Fort Myers Beach, I thank you for coming here as well. I know I've had many, many conversations with you all and look forward to having more. I worked on the beach for years, and my family has worked on the beach, so I am very familiar with Fort Myers Beach. And being there for Charlie and seeing what happened there with the devastation, I see it. I mean, I understand what you're going through. Not as much, but I do understand that. I also wanted to say, even when we were saying the pledge of allegiance, you could hear the kids out there saying it. And that, to me, was so strong that it just, I heard that louder than anybody else, you know, the kids saying it. I also wanted to share as well, we just got neighbors helping neighbors, North Fort Myers Group, who have been here helping us. They, a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago or so, they donated, got together, and we came up with 750 backpacks. Well, I'll tell you, on Monday, we received 2,000 backpacks for our students. So when someone asks Debbie, if you want something for free, I will take it, all day long, and we will find a place to put it. So we will be distributing the backpacks to our students and our schools that are in need. So if there is any one So, if there is any one out there who does need them, please let us know, because we definitely want to make sure that we get them out to the families. Fort Myers Fire Chief will be helping distribute some of them to our Fort Myers schools with the firefighters, so that'll be exciting for the schools within the Fort Myers area. And I want to thank Ms. Roman and Ms. Thomas there, always there to assist in the office to make sure that we're doing, getting these things together for our students. I want to say again, congratulations to Mr. Persons and Mr. Fisher, and look forward to working with, with you all, the rest of the board, Ms. Flemings as well, Langford Flemings. And, and we are here to assist you with whatever you need. So, thank you. And everyone, please have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming?
First of all, I am going to try really hard not to repeat what you've heard up here. Yes, I am very excited to, I'm honored to be up here on the dais with some great people, and I look forward to the change that's going to come. I look forward to helping. I had my whole family up here. My Jenna swore you in, and my dad swore me in, so it is a family commitment, and I'm incredibly excited about it. But I want to talk about what's really pressing tonight. I listened to all of the families that came up and spoke, and I kept hearing the same words over and over again. Children, family, community, resilience, strong, memories. I am a seventh-generation Floridian, if you listen to me through my campaign trail. So, that means that the majority of my family vacations were on Fort Myers Beach growing up, even when the pink shell were just little tiny cottages. So, whenever you talk about your memories, those are my memories too. So, I was incredibly touched by all of the stories. Please know that we are listening. You have a board now that is going to listen to you. We may not have all the answers tonight on the dais. We may not have all the answers tomorrow, but we're going to get those answers for you. Yes, Tessa, Ella, and Olivia, you were the stars of the show. That is, as a former teacher in the classroom, you girls that showed up, well, I'm just going to tell you, you, you took my breath away. You girls are the reason why I decided to do this in the first place, students like yourself. Thank you to our educators that came out tonight and gave us another lens to look through. We're, we're very grateful for you. I know that there was young, a young man that talked about, he had worked 12 hours today, but he took time to come to the board meeting. You heard Devon. Thank you again. I am honored to be able to serve along with you and to serve the parents, families, and the students of Lee County. Be blessed over your Thanksgiving holiday. Stay safe.
Mrs. Morgan?
When you're the sixth one in line, it's hard to say something new. But I do want to say, thank you, Fort Myers Beach, for attending, and I, and I spoke very briefly to some of the people before the meeting started to say, you spoke passionately tonight, but, but in the emails, I want to thank you for the emails, because some of you have asked very good questions, and you have made really excellent suggestions. And so, as a, as a school community, we really need to hear your questions to make, to make sure that we're asking the right questions and we're looking at the right information. So, we do read the emails, and we do hear you, and I am grateful to see how many of you are actively engaged in this process, and I hope you will continue to be as we work through it. I also want to thank my colleagues. I have to say, after the workshop, I just, I sort of walked out on air. I was just feeling really terrific about this new board and the kind of work I think we can do together. I think we're all in the same place, and I think we all want the same thing, which is to be an effective, high-performing school board, doing what's best for kids. So, welcome. Congratulations to you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair. And I will also say, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. A good break for everybody. So, enjoy, and we'll all come back ready to work together. So, thank you.
I said earlier what I felt about the Fort Myers Beach community. They're awesome. So, and everybody else here seems to be saying the same thing. But I do want to thank the staff. We went through orientation, three of us that have not been on this board before, and they did an excellent job. You know, some orientations for councils and things, they like, here's your phone, here's your key, see you tomorrow. We had a solid week of orientation and meetings with all the department heads or chiefs, and also meeting with the cabinet, so I really appreciate all of that. The welcoming from the present members has also been fantastic, so I am looking forward to a really productive year also. Thank you. Ms. Dupay Bruno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I have to say is happy Thanksgiving to everybody and have a great vacation, break.
And Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Fort Myers Beach Elementary Community, I also want to echo your sentiments of thank you. It's been wonderful to continually engage with the parental representatives, but hearing the larger voice tonight, including hearing the mayor again, who I had the great opportunity to meet yesterday. I think the most important thing for Fort Myers Beach to hear tonight is that we heard them, and then I want the board to be assured that one of the options that will come forward on December 13th will be to rebuild the school. There will be other options for this board to consider, and we will dig deeper into those questions that we're still answering, and we will continue to get more and more information. But to those parents who've been with us from the very beginning, there are a couple that I got a chance to meet today when I went to the reception, and the comment was, "I'm surprised you came down." Why wouldn't I come down? If you can't engage with the community and have a difficult conversation, then you're not leading. So, I thank you for the opportunity, and I know a lot of the people have left, but I hope that message will either be listened to on YouTube or wherever it's listened to or carried back. But we do want to make sure that you will know that there, it will be an option, it could be a very expensive one, but there will be an option potentially to rebuild the school and other options for you to consider. So, it was never an option not to bring that. However, there is difficult decisions ahead of all of us, so I thank you for that, that understanding. Board members, I'd like to remind all of you that the newly-elected board members will inherit some of the advisory committees of their predecessor to serve as the capacity of the board liaison. Probably in the midst of your orientations that Chairman Armour Parsons just spoke highly of, you probably received that information, but I just want to remind you that you have information of future workshops that will be scheduled moving forward, and again, a reminder to everyone about committee nominations and other things that have gone out. Football. You can't get through a board meeting in the fall without a football notice. I want everybody to know that Dunbar has moved on in the playoffs, squeaking a, what I'm told is a nail-biter, out versus North this past week, this past week. They were playing Naples on Friday night, so if you can recover from your turkey and feel like getting out, it'll be a great event if you'd like to see that. Lastly, I received information from Dr. Tomaszewski. He's the Fine Arts Performance and Arts Coordinator. I want the board to know that we have 56 all-state students this year specifically related to chorus and musical arts. This is an increase of just three, but when you think about it, most of these tests and most of these opportunities occurred either just prior to Hurricane Ian or just immediately after. So, I will tell you that not in the midst of a hurricane, the arts are alive and well in our community, and they'll be recognized at the All-State Conference, January 11th to the 14th, and they will come forward for board recognition at the appropriate time. Lastly, I have the same words of thanks to all of you. It's a matter of thanking people in the course of our daily lives, but it's also a matter of making sure that we're thankful for certain people who come in and out of our lives. First and foremost, for me, I'd like to thank the students and families who I enjoy so often and interacting with even during difficult times. It's a bond as an educator you feel with your community when you're a school principal and a teacher in a classroom, and the superintendency is no different. I also want to be thankful for the staff that we have, the teachers, the support professionals, the bus drivers, the administrators, the leaders of our school building, and the central office staff that I work as closely with as I do with my own family. I want to thank everybody, because a superintendent is not successful without the help and support of that staff. Finally, I'd like to thank my new board members and my current board members. I guess I want to thank the current board. It is a really fine opportunity to move forward with all of you, and again, we have some difficult decisions early in our, in our, in our new group that supports one another. But I know that we will focus on being honest, open, transparent with each other, and with that, we will make better informed decisions in order to help our community move forward. Lastly, I do want to start where I finished. I want to thank my local superintendents and my superintendents from across the state. We would not be here without them. They sent people with sleeping bags who slept on the floors in our conference room, took showers in our small little gym, and they went to work each and every day, getting as much done as they possibly could to assist our fine men and women who work in our own maintenance division. So, I just want to make sure that our fellow superintendents who may be using that video with their own boards over the course of the next several days, I want them to know how deeply thankful we are, and I look forward to FSBA, because the other district superintendents will be at that as well. It's a great chance for us to say thank you face to face, so appreciate your time this evening, and thank you for a great first meeting and allowing your superintendent to get through his first official chairmanship. If there was some nerves on my end, which I'm sure everyone noticed, it was having that gavel. I was never more happy to give it to someone else.
Oh, that being said? Meeting adjourned. Oh, we got to make a motion, don't we? Oh, the next meeting is December 13th? I do not have that. I do not have the last page. I've been winging it. Our next board meeting is when? Oh, this is much easier. Please excuse me. Okay, the next board meeting, on Monday, the 5th, there'll be a board workshop. On Tuesday, December 6th, a board briefing meeting, and on Tuesday, December 13th, will be a board workshop. We'll also have, I'm sorry, we'll have an action meeting following the briefing on December 6th. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Do we don't need to? All right. Adjourned.